Hey everybody, welcome back to session five, well that'd be session 10. Session five, so welcome to 20 for 2020. Uh, we're taking 20 looks at the book of Revelation for 2020 vision in the year of 2020. And so when we say 2020, we, a lot of times we say, man hindsight is 2020. Listen, for the Christian, for the believer, for those that want to know the second coming of Jesus the Christ, let's have 2020 vision for the future, for, for looking forward, not looking backwards. So tonight, thank you for joining us. If you've missed the first four sessions, excuse me, you'll see them on WhitestoneChurchTX.com on our YouTube channel under the same name WhitestoneChurchTX. And um, you can catch up, we're in session five, we're gonna be in chapter four and five of Revelation tonight. And so join me as we pray and get started and uh, cause we're gonna talk about heaven. We're gonna see God's throne, we're gonna see eternity. Uh, and it's gonna be an exciting ride tonight. So we love you, thank you for joining us and let's pray. Father God, we pray that you would be magnified, you would be glorified, that Father you are holy, you are righteous, you are true. And so Father God, bring heaven down to earth. God, your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. God, bring a vision, bring a glory. I pray for vision and dreams for every person listening, God, that we would not have a vision for just this earth, but we would have a vision for heaven. In the mighty name of Jesus, and everybody said, amen. I wanna ask you, we picked up a little bit on it last night, but let's say we were gonna take a trip to an exotic island. I've never been to the island of Fiji, but I've seen pictures about it and, and I've seen brochures at Costco about it with these little bungalows over the water and, you know, I could, and so I, you know, here's a question about heaven. If, if you were given two free weeks to go on vacation in the island of Fiji, if you're anything like me, you'd be super excited, you would tell your friends, you would, you would, I would tell Stacy, I'd come home, I'd say Stacy, you can't believe it, we just got two free weeks. And then I would want to study about the destination. So I would get on Google and I would look up Fiji islands, I would wanna know what the temperature was like. I would wanna know, do I need mosquito spray? Uh, yeah, how much, how much is the hotel? What's my room look like? What kinda hotel are we staying in? A motel or a resort? Uh, what kinda flight are we taking? I would wanna know what the food is like? What's the culture like? What's the language? What's the currency? Uh, I would get online and I would study about where I'm going so that I would pack appropriately. And then I would look up my flight, I would get to the airport on time, I'd get there two hours early just to make sure everything was good. I would prepare so that I wouldn't one, miss my flight and that I would arrive at my destination. I would want to know where I'm going and know what to expect. So many Christians say, oh yeah, I love Jesus and I ask him in my heart and, and I'll say, well, where are you gonna go when you die? Oh, I'm going to heaven, pastor, I'm going to heaven. Well, what's heaven like? Uh, well, uh, man, I, I don't know, my loved ones are there and uh, the gold, the streets are gold and, and, and so people ask about heaven or they have these, but man, we're not studying, we don't know where we're going. And if we don't know the destination, then we might get distracted and not think that it's that big of a deal. And we could miss the flight, we could miss the destination. So I wanna, wanna say it like this, to Christians today, let's get into the word of God and let's find out what God says about heaven. Cause if we know where we're going, then we'll fight harder here to get, to stay away from things that would prevent us from arriving at our destination in the best shape as possible. Here's the thing, when you get to heaven, God's gonna hold us accountable. Not just do we have Jesus in our heart? Yes, that's the, that's the measure of heaven versus hell. But the accountability part is gonna be, hey Cameron, what'd you do with what I gave you? How'd you handle your marriage? How'd you handle your kids? How'd you handle your talent? Did you use your talent for me or did you use it for you? Did you glorify me or did you glorify yourself? See, we're gonna be held accountable. So let's one, get to heaven, two, let's get to heaven prepared, and three, let's send stuff there before we get there. Let's, let's get as many people with us, let's store up treasure in heaven before we get there. So Revelation chapters one, two, and three give us a glimpse of Jesus the Christ and gives us a glimpse of the condition of the worldwide church. And the worldwide church is a picture in chapters two and three, it is talking about the churches in America, the churches in China, the churches in South America, the churches in Asia, the churches all around the world. But it's also outlining seven conditions of your heart. And for this application, I want you to zero in on that more than anything. It is seven dispensational periods of time, it is seven uh, potential traps. It, it, it was referencing seven real churches and it, and it is today. But for the purpose of this study, read those five, those seven churches and say, is my heart cold towards God? Am I dead in place? Is my heart dead? Is my heart compromising? Am I corrupt? Did I fall out of love with God? Let it challenge you. So when we hit chapter four, the first verse that says this, for Revelation, chapter four, verse one, it says, after these things, after what things? After the things of this church, after looking at your heart, then look towards heaven. Hey, after these things, after you let God run you through the, the heart detector of heaven, like the TSA would on an airplane flight, let God run your heart through the heart detector and tell you, hey, is your heart forgiving or is it, or is it unforgiving? Is your heart, heart full of love or hate? Are you full of pride or humility? Let God judge your heart. After that, get ready for heaven. Focus on where we're going. See, the book of Revelations is fixing to, the Revelation is fixing to get really, really good. So the next two chapters are all about heaven, God, Jesus, and an eternal glimpse, glimpse into the throne room of God himself. So after these things, I looked, and John's speaking here, he wrote here, John the revelator, he, he wrote the book of Revelation on the island of Patmos. After these things, I looked and beheld a door standing open in heaven. Man, it's still time to walk into heaven. God has not shut the door on you. He says, if you want me, you can, you can come to me and I'll, and I'll let you in today. There will be a time when the door will be shut, but as of today, April 3rd, 2020, it's still open, amen. I looked into heaven and the first voice which I heard was that like a trumpet speaking to me saying, come up here, John, I'll show you these things which must take place after this. Immediately I, John, was in the spirit, in the spirit, not in the body, in the spirit. Listen, are you in the spirit? If you'll be in the Holy Spirit today, he'll show you visions. If you'll get in the spirit today, he'll, he'll give you dreams. If you'll get in the spirit today, he'll lay, he'll use you to lay hands on sick people to heal them. If you'll get in the spirit today, he'll speak through you prophetically like you've never spoken. If you'll get into the spirit, God will do the supernatural. If you just stay in the flesh, if you just keep scripture in the, in the mental realm and you just use it for intellectual scriptural knowledge, you'll just have that. But if you'll go into the spirit, God will take the words off this page and bring life to it. And you'll do supernatural miraculous things. I, John, was in the spirit and behold, a throne set in heaven and one sat on the throne. In your scripture, that one is capital and it's singular indicating God the Father, Jesus Christ, the Holy Spirit, God himself. There's one throne and there's one person that can sit on that throne and that's God himself. And he who sat on the throne was like a jasper and a sardis stone in appearance. And there was a rainbow around the throne in appearance like an emerald. John uses these precious stones to describe Jesus Christ, God. He did uses him to describe, he uses a rainbow to say there's like a halo around him. There's like this, this uh, um, clear picture of who God is. He's strong, he's precious, he's beautiful, he's beautiful like a rainbow. He's beautiful like precious diamonds, precious stones. And around the throne were 24 elders, or I'm sorry, 24 thrones. And on the thrones, I saw 24 elders sitting clothed in white robes and they had crowns of gold on their head. Remember the crowns represent position, kingdom, territory, authority. If you have the crown that you, in our day and age, we would say, well, you know, that person, he's the president of the company, he has authority, he has the crown as president. Hey, that person there, they're the mayor or they're crowned with governing the city because they're the mayor of the city. So this crown means that these 24 elders, these are 24 uh, men who are, people who are on 24 different thrones surrounding God. So if you could get a picture of God in the center and 24 thrones around him and, and these, these men and women are worshiping God. Number five, and those, and from the throne, from God's throne proceeded lightnings, thunderings, and voices. Dude, that's not a scary thing, that's a magnificent thing. You know Niagara Falls is beautiful, but it'd be really scary if you were in a canoe at the bottom of it, amen? Here we go. And the throne, and from the throne proceeded thunderings, lightnings, and voices. And there were seven lamps of fire burning before the throne. There were seven lamps of fire burning before the throne, which are the seven spirits of God. Listen, I don't know about you, but have you ever envisioned heaven? Have you ever really thought, what's heaven like? See, in bumper sticker Christianity, bumper sticker religion, we just kinda have this dumbed down version. Oh, well, heaven's gonna have like God, uh, Jesus will be there, oh, oh grandma, grandpa, people who've, my loved ones will be there, that'll be really cool. Uh, yeah, David who killed Goliath, he'll probably be there somewhere. There'll be some angels. Uh, and there won't be demons and there won't be the devil. And I think the streets are gold. Man, it's so much deeper than that. There are so many facets of, and varieties and, and, and mysteries encompassing heaven that we can't even, John couldn't even verbally describe them well. And we are, need to allow God to infuse our imagination, infuse our vision for heaven with accurate uh, description, accurate word pitch, accurate uh, and accurate description, if you will. So before the throne, okay, so, so here we go, there were seven burning lamps. And there are seven spirits of God. Turns me to Isaiah, let's go to Isaiah chapter 11. And Isaiah chapter 11, verse two and three tells us what these spirits of, of God are. And they're not, they're not seven different spirits, there's only one Holy Spirit. But this is what Jesus encompassed, this is what made Jesus so powerful. And, and when we're talking about God, you gotta remember, Jesus is God. Let me say it again, Jesus is God. So when we're talking about God, we're talking about Jesus. Jesus, God in the flesh, came to earth and dwelt among men. And look at, listen to Isaiah chapter 11, verse two and three. The spirit of the Lord will rest upon him, Jesus, the spirit of the Lord. The word Lord there doesn't just mean God, but it means owner, like a landlord is the owner of a piece of property. You may rent from someone and they, they would be called a landlord. Well, Lord means owner. The spirit of ownership was on Jesus, the spirit of wisdom, the spirit of understanding, the spirit of counsel, the spirit of might, the spirit of knowledge, and the spirit of the fear of the Lord was on Jesus Christ. So when it's talking about the seven spirits, these aren't like, you know, whoo, these are, these are spirits of counsel, wisdom, might, ownership, fear, not fear like, oh God, don't hurt me, no, no, reverence, fear of reverence. So that's, when it talks about the seven lamps uh, burning with fire, these are the seven spirits of God. God is like a burning fire. His, his wisdom wants to burn through your wisdom. That's why we fight him. When God says, hey, listen, I want you to take a tenth of your offering and trust, a tenth of your, your income and trust, trust me with it in the tithe, we're like, oh no, no, I can't do that. His wisdom will burn through your wisdom. See, it doesn't sound practical, it doesn't sound doable, but the wisdom of the Lord says, no, if you'll trust me, I'll take the 90 and it will go farther than the 100. See, there's this wisdom that's biblical, that's godly, that, that transcends our man earthly wisdom. Verse six, before the throne, there was a sea of glass. You know, like in front of the, the mall in, in Washington, you got that, that sea, or not that sea, but that, 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 what do they call it? The, you know, the water that's there and it's only like this thick. And if you ever saw Forrest Gump and he goes running through it, or you know that, I know that, that just, I just destroyed my whole session bringing in Forrest Gump. But there's a sea of glass before the throne, like crystal. And in the midst of the throne and around the throne, now listen, I'm not making this up. Around the throne are four living creatures, full of eyes in front and in back. Listen, there are some creatures around the throne of God that I don't know what to tell you they are, except they're angelic creatures that glorify God all day long and they're covered with eyes. God sees everything. He records everything. In other passages, it talks about the books plural that are written about your life. Talks about the lamb's book of life that, that hopefully your name is written in. Well, these creatures are around the throne and here's a description of what these creatures look like. The first living creature was like a lion. He's not a lion, but he like, listen to the word, he's like a lion. So, so John's describing, man, this, this first creature is like, like a lion, man, he's, he's ferocious. He's, he's, he's got the characteristics of a lion. The, the second is like a calf. The third is like a face, uh, the third living creatures has a face like a man. And the fourth living creature was like a flying eagle. And the four living creatures each had six wings. They were full of eyes around and within and they did not rest day or night, but continuously said, holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come. Holy, holy, holy Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come. Whenever the living creatures give glory and honor and thanks to Jesus who sits on the throne, who lives forever and ever, the 24 elders would fall down before him and worship Jesus, who lives forever and ever, and cast their crowns before the throne saying, you are worthy, oh Lord, to receive glory, glory, honor, power, for you created all things and by you, and by your will they exist and were created. Listen, around this throne are these four living creatures. And these creatures are unlike anything else that we've seen before. We're gonna talk about angels in just a minute. But these creatures have six wings. And they have eyes all around and one of them looks like a man and one looks like a, a lion and one looks like a calf and one looks like an eagle. They have these different characteristics that describe the, the vastness of God and bring him glory. And they continuously say, holy, holy, holy Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come. My friend Kevin Wilson taught me this so many years ago. He said, Cameron, they're not broken records. It's not like that's all they can say, holy, holy, holy Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty, who was and is, you know, it's because every second of every day, they are continuously seeing what God is doing all around the world, how in control he is, how good he is, how merciful he is, how gracious he is, how he protected you in that car accident where you should've died, how he kept you from filing bankruptcy and provided at the last minute just enough money to cover the, the debt, how he saved that marriage, how he, how he graciously took that loved one and kept him from so much pain. He is continuously showing his goodness to us. And so we can, these creatures can't help but continuously just be blown away by God. Saying holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come. See, when they fall down in worship, it causes a chain reaction. The elders fall down in worship. And then the elders say, they say this, you are worthy, oh Lord, to receive glory and honor and power, for you create all things and by your will they exist and were created. And they would cast their crowns before the throne. See, here's a crazy thing and we'll get to angels in just a second. When you die, you're gonna go to judgment. And the Bible says you'll stand before judgment and God will separate the saved from the unsaved, the sheep from the goats. He'll say, he'll separate those. And he's gonna ask you, hey, listen, why should I let you in heaven? And, and our answers can't be, well, I was a good person. God's gonna say, no, I think you broke some of the ten commandments. And in my case, I've broken pretty much all of them, right? And, and Jesus is, God's gonna say, well, why should I let you in heaven? The only answer is, man, I asked your son into my heart. And through his righteousness, through what he did right, he covered me and he clothed me in white. And God's gonna say, come in, well done, good and faithful servant. But what we don't realize is that we will also stand in judgment for what we do as Christians. We're forgiven for what we did when we're non-believers, but as believers, we're held accountable. And when we are judged, the Bible says God will set on fire all the works that we did as believers. He'll take all the offering you put in the plate, he'll take all the little old lady that you helped across the street. He'll take all the mission trips that you went on, he'll take all the, all the times you did something for God. And he's gonna consume them in his fire that we saw earlier. And the only thing that will be left will be that which is pure, that which was done with the right heart. God's gonna say, yeah, Cameron, I know you helped a hundred little old ladies across the street. But Cameron, only 10 of them did you really do because you cared about the, the little old lady. 90 of them you did to impress Stacy and to make her think you were a good guy. See, he'll judge the motive. Are you with me? So when we are rewarded, he's gonna give some of us these crowns and some of us he'll give these rewards. And these elders have been rewarded for what they've done on earth. And the thing is, when we get to heaven, we're gonna realize, man, we couldn't have done any of it without Jesus. So we're gonna cast our crowns back to him. There's a Christian band called Casting Crowns, that's where they get their name. We're gonna give back, God, we, I didn't really wanna help that old lady, but you changed my heart and I helped that little old lady. God, God, I, I really, I wasn't such a, a great guy to go on that mission trip, but because you saved me, I wanted to just go help somebody else. I didn't do anything, you did it all. God's gonna say, yeah, but I wanted you to partner with me. So when we look at this throne room of God, really study this passage, study this chapter and let God open your eyes to what the throne really looks like. See, the devil has convinced even Christians of a few great lies. One, the party's in hell and heaven's boring. That's a lie. The party's in heaven. Hell is gonna be horrible. The Bible says heaven is where God is, it's light, it's bright, there's food there, there's a marriage there, there's jobs there, there's houses there, there's streets there, there's music there, there's flowers there, there's rivers there, there's trees there, there's fruit. He says hell is dark, lonely, on fire. There's maggots and worms for your bed, your skin, your flesh is forever. Uh, um, uh, you're, you're trying to satisfy, um, you're trying to, to put out the hurt, but you can't. It's, hell is miserable. So when we look at heaven as a Christian, let's really know where we're going. So as we get into chapter five, I wanna talk about angels real quick. And I wanna ask you, what do you know about angels? What kind of angels are there in scripture? See, again, and a lot of us just believe, well, there's angels, there's demons, there's God, there's the devil. Okay, those are all true, but there's much more depth to that. The scripture talks about several different kinds of angels. There are seraphim angels, there are cherubim angels, there are angels that ministered to Jesus in the garden of Gethsemane. There were warring angels that walked into Ushar Lot and his family out of Sodom and Gomorrah. There are angels like Gabriel that came and delivered the good news to Mary saying, you're gonna have a baby. And then there's angels like Michael in the book of Jude who are contending with Satan. There are different types of angels. There's also what we forget, fallen angels. So there's holy angels and then there's angels that Jude would say have left their heavenly abode or their proper domain. And they're fallen angels. So all through scripture, when we read about these creatures and we read about these, they have six wings, that's a style or a type of cherubim, that's a type of angel. They're not just these little fat things that got, you know, wings and wear diapers and have these little bows and shoot people at Valentine's Day. That's Satan trying to uh, dumb down our understanding of these mighty creations of God. So when we think about angels, we're gonna be shown what angels do for several chapters. There'll be angels that, that have great power and great assignments from God. So, so when you're reading this, think about what, what is my understanding of angels? And is it accurate? To get some other glimpses of heaven, look at Isaiah chapter six and Ezekiel chapter one. Isaiah chapter six and Ezekiel chapter one, those are two other glimpses into the throne room of God. And we'll see some more later on in Revelation. So let's dive into chapter five. Chapter five is about a sealed book or a scroll. It's about a sealed book or scroll. So I have an illustration, I'm gonna read a couple verses first, I'm gonna show you an illustration cause, cause we don't do a lot with scrolls in our modern society, we deal with books. And so listen to this, chapter five, Revelation, verse one. And I saw on the right hand of him who sat on the throne, a scroll written inside and on the back sealed with seven seals. On your paper, you need to write seals, you need to write seven seals. So there's a scroll that's sealed with seven seals, we'll come back to that. Then I saw a strong angel proclaiming with a loud voice, who is worthy to open the scroll and loose its seals? Who's worthy to open the scroll and loose its seals? And no one in heaven or, or on earth or under the earth was able to open the scroll or look at it. So I, John, cried or wept much because no one was found worthy to read the scroll or to look at it. Let me, let me give you an example. I brought with me kinda like this, this tube. And in this tube, if you open it up, however you do that, if you open it up, out comes this scroll or this picture. And so John's saying, hey, who's worthy to open up this scroll? In other words, if, if somebody, a great billionaire died and left its inheritance to one person, but we didn't know who that person was, we didn't know where they were at. And we had to check their DNA and their birth certificate and other qualifications. We would send out this notification, who, who's worthy of this inheritance? Who is the lost heir to this inheritance? See, the earth is Jesus's inheritance, Psalms two tells us. The earth belongs to Jesus. He gave it to Adam, Adam gave it to Satan, Jesus took it back on the cross. So the, the heavenly hosts and the earth is waiting for Jesus to come take what's his. So when it says, who's worthy to open the scroll or to, to read the scroll and loose its seals, Jesus Christ is the only one. So let's read what it says in verse five. One of the elders said to me, do not weep. Behold, the lion of the tribe of Judah, the root of David, has prevailed to open the scroll and loose its seals. And behold, I, John, looked in the midst of the throne and the four living creatures and in the midst of the elders stood a lamb as though it had been slain. Who's that? That's Jesus the Christ. Having seven horns and seven eyes, which are the seven spirits of God sent out into all the earth. Then he came and he took the scroll out of the right hand of, of him who sat on the throne. So Jesus comes and he takes his scroll, he takes his, his deed. See, the scroll here means title or the deed to the earth. If you own a piece of property, let's just say that you go out and buy 10 acres with a house and you pay cash for it, the banker's gonna give you a deed, a title and says, here is your deed. It's free and clear, we checked all the records, this belongs to you. So he would give us a deed. Well, the scroll here is the deed or the title to the planet earth. The seals are mimicked by my, my duct tape here, haha, I think the seals would be a lot more fancy. But, but this is, this is how it will, this is how, this is what, when we look at the seals, this is how it's gonna go down and I'll come back to this in just a minute. But but this is, this is how it will, this is how, this is what, when we look at the seals, this is how it's gonna go down and I'll come back to this in just a minute. Now, when he had taken the scroll, the four living creatures and the twenty four elders fell down before the lamb, each having a harp and bowls full of incense and the prayers of the saints, and they sang a new song. You, Jesus, are worthy to take the scroll and to open its seals, for you were slain and you have and you have redeemed us to God by your blood. Out of every tribe and tongue and people and nation, you've made us kings and priests to our God and we shall reign on the earth. Then I looked and I heard a voice of many angels around the throne, the living creatures of the elders, and the number of them was ten thousand times ten thousands and thousands of thousands, saying with a loud voice, worthy is the lamb who was slain to receive power and riches and wisdom and strength and honor and glory and blessing. And every creature which is in heaven and on earth and under the earth and such that are in the sea and all that are in them, I heard them saying, blessing and honor and glory and power be to him who sits on the throne and to the lamb forever and ever. And then the twenty four creatures said amen and the elders fell down and worshiped Jesus who lives forever and ever. There's a lot going on here, but this is where we're headed in Revelation. It's all about this scroll. The scroll is the title to the planet earth. And in the in the next couple of chapters, we're gonna read about these seals. So let's just pretend that you owned again ten acres. And on that ten acres, you've been away for a while. You went on a trip and you've been gone off of your piece of property for say, five years. And the enemy who hates you, he decided to go ahead and send some people to move in and take over part of your land. So he started to corrupt your land and he he started to send some people that didn't have a home and send them, say, hey, go live in this home and he set up some some campers over here, some tents on this other side and so he's inhabited your land. Jesus is coming back for his land and he will eradicate all those who are against him. And he'll destroy all law that's against him and all mindset that's against him. He'll destroy all mindsets of sin and hearts that are against him. So when it says he opens up the seal, see, like this, he's gonna open up the first seal and it's gonna show us so much until we get to another seal. I hope you can see my little duct tape there. So the first seal's gonna be opened up and we'll get to see this much of the title deed. We'll get to see this much of Jesus revealed. And then the Bible talks about the second seal. We'll see if I, if I didn't duct tape it too hard, here we go. Then Jesus will undo the second seal. And roll back the scroll some more. So by the time we get this through the seven seals, we'll see the entire, the entire deed will be revealed, the entire title, all the judgments of God. So we're fixing to enter into what we call seals and and what really sparked this study for this time. With this coronavirus going around right now, and we don't know, you know, half, half the stories we hear, we don't know what's true, what's not true. But but here's the truth. Jesus Christ is coming back. And there will be a day when seals will be opened up. And the seals, I'm gonna give us a teaser into chapter six for our Monday night session. Here's the first seal. So again, Jesus, we go from a heavenly scene back down to an earth scene. Jesus opens up the first seal. And this is the first seal, it's his first judgment of the earth. He says, now, when I saw the lamb opened one of the seals and I heard one of the four living creatures say with a loud voice, come and see. And I looked and behold, a white horse and he who sat on it had a bow and a crown was given to him. And he went out conquering to conquer. We're gonna talk about the four horsemen of Revelation. And the first one is a white horse. This is not Jesus. Because the rider on this white horse is sent out to conquer eh to conquer, to destroy. He's a deceiver. He's an old angel named Lucifer. So we talked about angels a little bit, we'll talk about them more progressively as we go. But there was an angel that used to be mighty with music, he was the music, musical instrument of heaven. He led people to worship God. But he fell because of his pride and he left heaven. And he took with him, because he had great influence, a third of the angels. And he's out on a white horse trying to make himself look like Jesus, he's an angel of light, he's a deceiver. He's out to conquer. So the first seal that Jesus is talking about is is saying, hey, listen, don't fall for Satan's game. Don't fall for the deceiver. So when we get into chapter six, which is where we're headed Monday night, we'll be there at six thirty. When we get there in chapter six, we're gonna go through the seven seals. And these seven seals are not good times on earth. It's gonna start this thing called the great tribulation, it's gonna start a time of seven years of great horrific judgments on the earth. But it's not because God's in a bad mood. It's because he's trying to bring us back to correction like we learned in chapters two and three. He's trying to get us our attention. Come back to me, he's separating those who love him and those who don't love him. So as you walk through this time, know this, that there's a real place called heaven. There's a real place called hell. You want to go to heaven. Heaven is a place filled with glory and beauty and excitement and joy and peace and love and acceptance and purpose and plans. Hell is a place void of all of that. So if you're a Christian, you need to know where you're gonna go. Not just, oh, I'm gonna go there someday, I don't really know what it's about. Know what it's about, read the book of Revelation, amen? God bless you, thank you for joining us. Father God, I pray for your peace as we walk through this time. God, I pray for your revelation of the city of heaven. God, I pray that we would see the throne of God one day, God, that that it'll be exciting to go to heaven to see our loved ones, but oh God, it will be so exciting to meet and to see you face to face. So Father God, we love you and we bless you. In Jesus's name, amen. Listen, join us for Sunday morning, uh, ten forty-five, we'll be broadcasting our Whitestone Church TX um, dot com, we'll be broadcasting our services at ten forty-five on our YouTube channel, Facebook Live and um on our website. So please join us, if you need anything, you can go to our website and click contact us and we'll reach out to you. If you wanna get some notes, I've got notes for tonight's session, we'll send them to you. Uh, other than that, we'll see you again Monday night, six thirty. God bless you, thank you.